August 3, 2020, meeting of the Shawnee Planning Commission. I'll do roll call at this time. Commissioner Montgomery is absent. Commissioner Roth is absent. Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Willoughby.
Here.
Commissioner Beanhoff.
Here.
Commissioner Busby is here. Commissioner Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Brayley is absent. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bingham.
Here.
Commissioner Nannick.
Here.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The consent agenda. Consent items one and two are listed under the consent items agenda. Unless there is a request to remove the items from the consent agenda, then items will be approved in one motion. I have a question, so I'd like to remove the second item on the agenda, which is FP 162008, Monticello Center Six Plat. With that removed, would some... Commissioner Beanhoff?
Yes, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda item excluding item number two, FP 16-20-08, Monticello Center Six Plat, final plat approval.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Peterson, thank you for the second. Since I withdrew FP 162008, the question is this. It seems odd to me that after the building has been up for two years that we're coming back now and basically uniting the two properties, would staff care to comment on that? Is this kind of an odd thing?
Chairman Busby, this is Mark Zildorff, City Planning Staff. I don't know if it's an odd thing or not, but we were aware when they came in for the building permit that they would eventually be coming in and replating these two parcels back together into one piece. I don't know the reason, the exact reason for the timing of it at this point in time, but it definitely does make sense to get this under one platted lot at this time.
And Mark, I absolutely agree. It just seems like an odd time after the building that now we're coming back to doing this. So it was just, it just seemed odd, so I needed to ask the question. I don't think it makes ill of beans either way, so it's not a problem for me. Any further discussion on the item or questions for the applicant or staff? If not, is there a motion to approve the item?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Nannick, how about just FP 162008? Since it was severed.
Yes, FP 16-20-08. Hello?
Yes, per staff recommendations?
Yes, per staff recommendations. Just getting some feedback.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Wise, I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wise. There's a motion, a second, to approve FP 162008, Monticello Center Six Plat, final plat approval, per staff recommendations. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Hearing no nays, I would assume that is unanimous. Thank you. On to new business. SUP 11-2008, Worthen Daycare at 7324 Flint Drive, special use permit. Staff?
Mark Zildorff with City Planning Staff. The applicant requests special use permit approval for operation of a group daycare with up to 12 children as a home occupation per Chapter 17.51 of the zoning ordinance. A daycare home is a permitted use.
Dennis, there's somebody in the center.
Ms. Worthen?
We're getting a lot of feedback from another microphone.
Right.
Can I go ahead and continue? Did that do it?
Yeah. Mark, go ahead. Go ahead. I see Ms. Worthen had her mic on, and that will help us a little.
Okay. So where I was, per Chapter 17.51 of the zoning ordinance, a daycare home is a permitted use, but is limited to six children. A special use permit is required for group daycare homes, and the maximum number of children allowed is 12. The applicant has resided at this address for the past two years. She currently does not operate a home daycare, but is in the process of obtaining all the required licenses and permits to allow her to open as a group daycare as a home occupation. The property is located at 7324 Flint Drive and legally described as Lot 13, Block 5 of Homestead Estates subdivision. The property is zoned R1, single-family residential, and contains a single-family residence. Surrounding properties to the north, to the east, and to the west are also zoned R1 and developed with other single-family homes within the subdivision. Property to the south, across 74th Street, is zoned commercial neighborhood and developed with a retail strip center. And an elementary school is located to the southwest, across 74th Street, on property zoned RGA. The daycare will have no more than 12 children under the age of 16, including the provider's own, at any time during business hours. A second licensed care provider will be present anytime there is over 10 children being cared for. The hours of operation will be 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And the property does include a two-car driveway that has approximately 53 feet of depth, so the existing driveway will provide adequate room for off-street drop-off and pickup of children. A fenced-in outdoor play area must be provided in accordance with city requirements. The property currently does not have a completely fenced-in area, although portions of the rear yard are fenced with a six-foot-tall wood fence. The applicant has indicated with approval of this special use permit, a fence will be installed to completely enclose the rear yard as required prior to operation of the daycare. The applicant is in the process of obtaining her license from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to allow for the care of up to 12 children. And the applicant has a business partner that will assist with the operation and care of the group daycare. As part of the licensing process, the applicant will be required to have a fire inspection by the city's fire department to ensure that all life safety requirements are satisfied. And the owner will also be required to obtain a business license from the city clerk for operation of a daycare as a home occupation. Granting a special use permit should have little, if any, detrimental effect on surrounding properties. Although this is a new operation at this location, it is anticipated to be operated in the same manner as numerous other special use permits for daycare or that have been issued for the provision of childcare as a home occupation without concerns being raised. Staff recommends approval of SUP-11-20-08, special use permit for Worthen Daycare for the operation of a group daycare with up to 12 children as a home occupation located at 7324 Flint Street, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, review of the special use permit in one year. Two, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and maintain an annually renewed daycare license from the state. A copy of the license shall be provided to the Community Development Department prior to operation of the daycare. Three, the applicant shall have no more than 12 children at the home between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Four, a second licensed care provider shall be present anytime there is over 10 children being cared for. Five, the applicant shall obtain an annual business license from the city clerk every year the daycare remains in operation. Six, the applicant shall install a fenced-in outdoor play area prior to operation of the daycare. And seven, no signage either onsite or offsite will be allowed. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
Ms. Worthen, are you in agreement with staff recommendations?
Yes, actually, we put up the fence over the weekend.
I'm sorry, one more time. It's a real pleasure.
The fence was put up over the weekend. So we don't have a fenced-in area to offer the kids clear.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Busby, I think she was just indicating that the fence was installed over the weekend, as required.
Oh, okay. But before you would give her occupancy, that would have to be checked out as well as the fire department, correct, Mark?
Oh, yes. We would go by and visually verify that. Yep, absolutely.
Does the commission have any questions for the applicant or staff? Hearing no questions, we would be in, we will start a public hearing on the matter. Does anybody from the public wish to weigh in on this matter?
Chairman Busby, there is a member in the audience here with us tonight that would speak to this item.
Thank you.
I'm Sue Davis. I live across the street. When you were talking about the cars, and they have a two-car driveway, and it be... Okay, you were talking about the cars, and it has a two-car driveway. It does have a two-car driveway. I tried to call the Commission Planning on Thursday and Friday of last week. No return calls. I called the codes department, talked to Kevin, and our number-one issue is he parks his big yellow car in the middle of the front yard, or in the yard, or to the right of the driveway in the yard. And that's on, not every single day, but it was there all weekend, and he left for work, came home, and it was there this morning again. I was told that once a month, they can park their car in the yard if they have issues like wanting to wash their car or something, but they can do that once a month. I said, "This is an ongoing issue." The first time he started doing it was last year. He put it in the middle of the yard, and we thought he was selling the car. We was gonna put, we thought he was gonna put a sale sign on it. But it turns out, he parks his car up there. He won't park it on the street. He parks it either in the driveway or in the yard. When there's only one car or two cars in the driveway, he will still park it in the middle of the yard. We have an issue with that. That is our number-one issue. So how can he say that he can park his car in the driveway and other people can come and drop their kids off when there's only a spot for four, and he's not even using one of the spots? That's an issue. Kevin told me that he didn't think that he would be able to check that out until after this meeting. I did look out this morning and saw that someone from the codes was there. They pointed to our house, so I know that she's aware that I am the one who contacted the codes department, probably. After he left, the car was in the driveway. We had issues with a refrigerator that was sitting out in the garage, in front of the garage, for the last three weeks. He's had his trash cans up there. He's had styrofoam on the side of the yard for days on end. When you're working on a job, I know he's got a building permit, when you're working on a job, you should be cleaning up after yourself every evening, and that's not been happening. After the inspector left, I went downstairs and came back up a couple hours later, and my husband said, "Look out." The refrigerator was gone, the trash cans were gone, and evidently, they had moved the car before that, before the inspector got there. I don't know. But I'm hoping this issue will take care of that, that he will no longer park his car in the yard. It's not a place for a property. That's my number-one. Another one is, is this going to do anything to our property taxes and to our property value on our home, having a daycare or a business within the community? And... That was our main issue, but I do want to say again, I'd like to make sure that he does not park, even though they've moved the car into the driveway, that later on, he doesn't start parking that car in the yard again. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and I did miss your name with the...
Sue Davis.
Sue Davis. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Sue Davis.
All right, Sue Davis. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else in the public wish to comment on this item?
Chairman Busby, there is no other people present in the audience tonight.
Very fine. Thank you, Mark. With that, then, we will close the public hearing. And that would put us into commission discussion, unless someone would care to ask Mr. Worthen, Ms. Worthen, about that? Mark, could you enlighten us on, will this, should this affect? I mean, parking your car on the lawn is less than optimal. How about that? But if there are drop-offs, then basically, the people are pulling up and dropping kids off. Is there enough room? And I'm guessing there must be at least two cars there, three cars. Is that still leave room for adequate dropping kids off?
This is Mark Zildorff. I mean, we have these special use permits for daycares throughout the city. We have numerous ones, up to 10, 12 children in them. Drop-off has never really been an issue or a concern, because generally, not every person comes at the exact same time. So they're kind of staggered drop-off and pickup. And then, you know, a lot of times, and I believe the applicant may speak to this as well, a lot of times, the children they're watching are siblings, so there, you know, maybe two or three that come in the same car. So we have not had a problem in the past with drop-off and pickup as long as there's, you know, an adequate driveway serving the property. The other issues with the car parked in the yard and those kind of things that Ms. Davis mentioned, those are more code violating, you know, property code maintenance issues more so than related to the special use permit request.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. So...
Commissioner Busby, this is Commissioner Peterson. I have a question. I know we review these on an annual basis for the first time, and sometimes it extends. And I know there are still steps this person needs to take to be granted the license. How often are code violations and special use permits overlapped? Does that get brought to our attention at the review if there have been code violations?
I would say not if they're not related. I can't recall a case in the past where that's been an issue. If it's a code violation that is related to the special use permit and the operation of the daycare itself, then yes, we would bring those back as part of that review. But if they're code-related violations that are unrelated to the operation of the daycare, such as trash cans not being put away properly, you know, debris or ladders or construction stuff that's in the yard, those kind of things that aren't necessarily related to the operation of the daycare, then no, those would not be part of that review.
This is Doug. This, I'll just, Mark said it perfectly, but I'll just add that code violations like parking in the yard or, you know, storage of useful items outside of the building, or even trash can violation, those aren't really plan and commission purview. Those are actually subject to issuance of a citation and a trip to municipal court if it goes that far. So that's why you wouldn't be hearing those in a review unless, like Mark said, if it was a, you know, a band with live entertainment as a special use permit, and we started getting decibel and noise complaints, you know, that are a code issue as well, then you would hear about it in a review. But normally, our code enforcement officers are very responsive, and if the neighbor or any neighbors in the neighborhood have issues, call us daily, and they will respond, just as they did today, apparently. So that's the remedy to those type of issues. It's more of a courtesy notice, you know, hopefully, there's compliance. But if there's not, a citation is issued, and the person can end up being fined or worse sometimes. So that's, I just wanted to add that to what Mark said.
So Doug, this is Commissioner Nannick. So I guess my question is whether it's our purview to make the decision now. I get it. Our view is to make the judgment based upon the zoning and having done all the requirements to fit the need of this business. But to the point, if there are code violations down the road, and I guess this is just a bigger question, does that, does the city then have the ability to come back to make a further judgment on the appropriateness of this business in this house?
I think, you know, there's always the opportunity to review a special use permit, especially at the council level, for a variety of reasons. At the staff level, we would try to keep code complaint-type things separate from the actual use itself. You know, if we found out that they were parking several people in the street, and they were not, and they were having a negative impact on surrounding properties by, you know, stacking cars or having children exit cars and run through others' neighbors to go to the business, those sort of things, then yes. But kind of back to my answer before, the city's answer to a code complaint is a trip to district or municipal court, and it really is separate from the zoning issue. A good example here is the fence. It's a city requirement. If the person didn't put the fence up, then yes, we would bring it back and have the ability to pull the special use permit if the fence wasn't maintained in conjunction with operation of the business. But other things like debris in the yard and those sort of things, really not related to the business, would be something that our code enforcement staff would handle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Smith?
Proceed.
Thanks, Doug, and Mark, and everybody. And you're exactly right. Your answers are spot-on. However, you know, when we approve these special use permits, we really are allowing someone to operate a small business in a residential area. So what all these things speak to is being a good neighbor. I don't know anything about the situation, but generally, if someone's willing to come forth, you know, and speak and identify themselves as the one turning people in for stuff, there might be a neighborhood issue. And we go out on a limb and trust these folks that they're going to be good neighbors and not adversely impact, you know, their neighbors. So I think there is some relevance to that, and I think it's only fair we give Ms. Worthen an opportunity to respond to that. But I do think that to some degree, that this really is something that we should consider. They're not going to be good neighbors, you know, living there now. Are they going to be good neighbors when there's traffic issues or other kind of issues? I have no problem weighing that a little bit.
Any other comments?
I guess the only, maybe, I'm sorry, I started that, and maybe, I'm sorry, I'm not. I don't know. The neighbors have valid concerns. The neighbors have the right to do whatever. My suggestion would, to all, is that in order to start this on a right foot, that maybe they cooperate. And I hate to sound like a mother, you know, taking two kids or whatever, but it's hard to start a business. I love the entrepreneurial spirit. I love the fact that somebody wants to do something like this. But we do have to be cognizant of how it impacts others. And I would really hate for this to be brought back to us even before the year is up, because there's a complaint problem. So I guess, I guess I'm saying, maybe we all need to take a little bit of nice medicine or something. I don't know. See what we can do.
Right, and I have a little speaker on. We have a plan. We had put the fence up this weekend. We haven't let it out. It wouldn't be a harm, yes. So instead of parking all the streets, we parked, we didn't park the corporate indoor generally. We didn't. We forgot to move it earlier last night. Apologize. We were trying to accommodate all the neighbors. We've had complaints because we were too close. We parked outside. We parked in the cars in the street. So we were just trying to keep the cars out on the street, like the neighbors had complained, or somebody had complained before about. So I do apologize. I will make sure that next time we'll just almost have to park on the side of the street then instead of parking inherently while we have other people over. The upper deck was all picked up. There's no anything outside that shouldn't be outside. I keep my resume, but stop by this side.
Ms. Worthen, could you stop just a second, Ms. Worthen? We're picking up so much background noise that I really can't understand most of what you're saying. Is there some TV on or radio or something in the background that's creating this?
I don't know. Just a second. I'm ready. I should have the TV on. There we go. Is that better?
No.
There's nothing on.
Ms. Worthen, are you on speakerphone by chance? Yeah. Can you maybe try and take it off speakerphone?
I can try to speak on the phone.
I think the invite that I sent you had a phone number that may be easier to call in on.
By the way, thank you very much. I know this is hard for her, but I really want to hear what she said, because it sounds to me like...
Dennis, this is Leo. If I have a question for staff, is that okay right now?
I'm sorry?
If I have a question for staff right now, is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was a good time and see if we can get, see if we can figure out a better way to hear what she has to say. So please, go ahead, Leo.
So I guess I just want to make sure, once we approve this here, we'll never, except for maybe in a year or something like that, we won't have, if there's any violations of code or, you know, any type of code violations, noise, et cetera, we will not hear this back. This will be the council's responsibility from here on out. I mean, of course, staff, I understand that, but I mean, we're giving the approval based upon the zoning and the appropriateness of the business for this area, and that is our decision alone. So I guess I'm trying to understand what... I'm not disagreeing with any of the questions and concern, the fact I have them myself, but I just want to make sure that we're asking the right things and what we need to make sure that we're addressing.
This is Doug. Yeah, this is Doug. I can clarify that. So a special use permit, just by normal cycle, would be subject to review after one year of operation. But a special use permit, if it's approved by you guys and then ultimately agreed to by city council, it can be called up for review at any time. So if we started getting a litany of complaints from neighbors that they weren't complying with the conditions of the special use permit, which may even include trash in the yard if children are playing and throwing down wrappers off of their ice cream cones or whatever, it's subject to review at any time. We can call up a special use permit. I will say, I think in 20-some years, I've had that happen twice, so it's a very rare thing. But what you would then do is, you would basically talk to the applicant again prior to that review cycle. You would try to iron out the issues, and if it were resolved at that level, we would usually give it a little bit more... Uh, you would try to iron out the, the issues and if it were resolved at that level, we would usually give it a little bit more time to see if things were resolved, but ultimately if they were not, then it goes on to council. The council can actually revoke a special use permit. And there's nothing that says, uh, a period of time that they have to be in business before that special use permit could be revoked. So they might be in operation for six months, be a bad neighbor, as I think Les described it. And the city would have the absolute right to revoke a special use permit if, if they were not complying with the conditions. Um, so you have more control maybe than what you thought, Leo.
Okay.
So I, I, I would give you assurance that these things are all subject to review and recall at any time.
Thank you, Doug.
You bet.
I think at this point in time, we now have her back on the line. So I'm going to unmute her and see if we can hear what she has to say. Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
That's much better.
Sorry, I had it on my computer. It was going through the speaker on the computer. Um, yes, when we had, we put the fence up over the weekend and we had other people, my, um, my father came over and the, also the Tess, the one that's going to be working with me was over as well. So we parked the car in the, on the, in the yard so that we'd be off the street. It means we'd had complaints by somebody that we were parking the cars on the street. So I was just trying to accommodate whoever was upset we were parking on the street. Um, I will just park on the street next time that we have company over. I'll just help make sure that they park on the streets. Um, as for the, the styrofoam, I apologize for that. We kind of forgot it was over there. We've already taken care of that. Um, it didn't fit in our trashcan the last week. But, um, we've got all that taken care of. So there's just no problems here on out with that. Also, um, Frank, the guy that lives across the street said we can park two vehicles in his driveway during business, um, during business hours, Monday through Friday. Open up space in the driveway for people to pull in and pull out or drop off, pick up.
Very fine, Ms. Worthing. Do you have anything else to add?
Um, no.
I have a question for you, Ms. Worthing, and that is, is, I guess the, the yellow car has been parked on the grass. And I don't know if you were hearing all of our conversations about it, but that's troublesome. It's a little different subject than what we normally deal with, but if it's, but allowing a business to go into a neighborhood with other things that are affecting the neighborhood, then that's drawn a concern for us. So is that the case that you've been parking some yellow car in the, on your yard?
We had parked. We were trying to accommodate whoever was calling, was complaining about the cars. Um, they complained that we parked them on the side of the streets. We've had a couple of complaints because it was too close to the stop sign, which we've got, we know where the line is now for that. And our, we got complaints because we were complaining, parking in front of the other neighbor's driveway when he backs up. So um, we had four vehicles already in the driveway at that time. So we just didn't want to block the, the street. But from now on, we will just park in the street and not park in the grass. I apologize for that and that will not happen again. Cause we had the vehicles parked back so we can have the fall in the front of the, in front. Otherwise we would have had room in the driveway.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Does, do any? Does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Worthing? Then we will be back in commission discussion. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Busby, this is Kathy.
Commissioner Peterson?
Um, I'm really in a quandary. Um, I always have a thought that I, I, when we do these home-based businesses, how does it impact the neighborhood? How? This, um, this one really, um, it's been the most oppositional that I've ever sat on. And I'm sorry for trying to find the right words, but, um, I know it's not our place to say, yes, this, they, they'll work this out or no, they won't work this out. Ours is kind of to wait and see. But without code implications or problems being brought to our attention because they're two different matters. I have, I have a concern that I haven't had before and I'm, I'm really in a quandary. I, I want, I want this to work. I want this to be a great opportunity for Ms. Worthing and the people in that residence and our partner, but yet I don't want to, um, add fuel to a situation that apparently, um, already has a spark. I don't know what to do.
Can, can I make a comment? Just one more clarification comment to?
Please, Doug.
So this is a special use permit for the ability to have over six children, um, in the, in the home. And, and we have these all over the city. And as I said, it's subject to review. Uh, we are now aware of code issues. It's my, my understanding. I think this is the first time we had heard of code issues with the site. Obviously our guys will be on top of that now. But the point I want to make is, is that a person could run a daycare at this house with si- with under six children without a special use permit. And if they had a refrigerator out front or if they had, you know, some, some unstored, unusable items stored like styrofoam out on the side, it would be a code violation. It wouldn't be anything related to the operation of the business, even though they would have a home business. The S U P is really just to look at the, um, additional children in the home to see if there's, you know, adequate uh, road access. It looks like it's on a corner lot. So there's, there's good street frontage and those sort of things. I just want to be clear that the S U P and peeling paint on the house is really not tied to one another. Uh, if it's a, if it's a circumstance related to the S U P in terms of additional traffic or, uh, you know, uh, people visiting the house at odd hours of the night when we've set conditions of approval from say 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM and people are dropping off kids at midnight, making noise. Those are the kind of things that the S U P is related to. And I, I just want to clarify that so that to, to give you guys some guidance in your decision-making.
Thank you, Doug.
Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Commissioner Smith?
We approve S U P 11 dash 20 dash 08, Worthing Daycare, 7324 Flint Drive, special use permit, subject to the conditions listed on the staff report.
To be clear, because I'm have a hard time hearing, but that, that was for approval. Is that correct, Les?
Yes, sir. Subject to the conditions listed on the staff report.
Thank you for approval. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Willoughby, thank you for the second. There's a motion and a second for approval of S U P 11 dash 20 dash 08, Worthing Daycare at 7324 Flint Drive, special use permit for daycare. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you and thanks, you know, and Doug and Kathy. I certainly understand. I chimed in on, on all part of that. And I think it does have a lot to do with being good neighbors and the trust we're placing in them. All of that being said, my experience with neighborhood disputes is there's usually three sides to every story. And I think we, um, we've not had any problems with folks with the, the daycares and whatnot. Then I think, you know, they deserve the benefit of the doubt. I think, uh, I intend to support them and let her prove that she's worthy of it. And if not in a year or sooner, we'll find out. But, um, again, we're talking about a situation. We don't really know a hundred percent all the facts. Um, so I think it's on, on, on you, Ms. Worthing to, to, um, if we approve this, for you to perform the way that, uh, you say you will and, and everything will be good. So I do intend to, to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any other, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose nay. I deem that motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Worthing. Good luck. And I'm glad these issues were brought up to you. I hope they're taken care of and congratulations to you.
Thank you very much, you guys. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is text amendment to the Shawnee Municipal Code, Chapter 17, day, dot 80 dash 010, Miscellaneous Use Regulations for Recreational Facilities. Stephanie?
Thank you, Chairman. Stephanie Malmbor, Community Development Staff. Can everyone hear me and see me okay?
Yes.
All right. Just making sure. All right. Uh, tonight we have a public hearing for a text amendment. This is to Chapter 17, point 80, point 010. It's the miscellaneous use regulations for recreational facilities. Uh, you received a short staff report about this item, uh, that went over the current regulations, some research that staff completed about similar regulations in our peer communities. And then also some proposed amendments. So I'm just going to go over those very briefly on this PowerPoint here on your screen. Um, can everyone see that okay? All right. Um, so our current regulations, uh, let me back up really quick. The, the context with this text amendment is we've been approached with a few different recreational type commercial businesses. And those are defined as things such as, um, public, or I'm sorry, uh, private commercial swimming pools, um, tennis courts, basketball courts, pickleball courts. We all know those are very popular right now. Um, outdoor mini golf, outdoor volleyball, um, you know, different baseball softball field type things, all those types of uses that have outdoor activity fields or courts. Is primarily what we're looking at here. And when staff was approached from a business, uh, looking to do one of these types of recreational, um, commercial, uh, uses, we were looking at the setback requirements and they range from 50 feet to a hundred feet. And in some cases that means it won't fit on certain sites that are rather small. And even if someone wanted to have, you know, three horseshoe lines or a place to have a set of bags or cornhole, whatever you call the game, um, in your mind. You know, those don't necessarily need to be a hundred feet from property lines if you have a smaller recreational type use. So what we wanted to do is take a look at the regulations. How can we make them better suit all of the possible recreational uses that we're looking at? And then look at what best practices are in other locations, including our peer communities. And then bring to you some proposed recommendations for how to amend the code so that we have something that's a little bit more flexible and, um, still protective of certain, uh, distances from places. So, uh, the current regulations, if you take a look at those, uh, they include setbacks for swimming clubs and pools that are from 100 to 200 feet from property lines. So quite a distance if you think about that, uh, swimming pool needing to be 200 feet from the nearest property, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, um, any zoning district. Uh, the current setbacks for other recreational uses range from 50 to 100 feet, like I mentioned. Uh, the section includes lighting requirements and a limit on amplified noises during the hours of 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. The section also includes a requirement that parking have a dustless surface and an enclosed building requirement for casinos and recreational halls. And that's really all that this particular section that we're looking at today covers is, are those things listed there on those bullet points. All right. On our next slide, I summarized the research that we did on this very topic. Uh, we took a look at the requirements for similar type uses in Overland Park, Lenexa and Aletha, which are peer communities in our area, as you know. Uh, primarily these uses require special use permits, which we will as well. Um, the setback requirements, however, varied greatly in these different communities. And I had some interesting conversations with staff members in these communities about this type of land use. And because of COVID, we're seeing a lot more businesses want to get activity outside so that we get more distancing, we get more fresh air. And so this is really a, an opportune time for this kind of, um, amendment to the code because we'll make it a lot more business friendly to those businesses that want to have these type of fun activities outside to get their patrons having some fresh air and social distancing. Uh, so Overland Park setback, they just require that the courts or fields meet the underlying zoning district setbacks. So say there's a 30-foot rear yard setback, uh, the court would have to meet the rear yard setback of 30 feet. If the side yard's 10 feet, the court meets the 10-foot side back and et cetera. Uh, they had a couple of special stipulations where if it backs up to residential, it has to meet the residential setback that's adjacent to it. Um, and then if it's a corner lot on a street side front yard, it has to meet the requirement for the street side front yard, I believe. Uh, Lenexa has a 400-foot setback requirement, which is much, much, much more than you'll see in Overland Park, more than our current requirement. And I did clarify with them that they do enforce that, um, from a court. They do consider a court or a field to be a structure because it has a board surface. So I did clarify because that seemed rather large and that was their interpretation that they do apply the 400-foot setback for that. I'm not sure how often that varies or how often that's enforced. Um, that's what they said their requirement was. And I spoke to Aletha planning staff today. Uh, in the staff report, you'll see that it was assumed that it would, uh, fall to the setback requirements of the underlying zoning district like Overland Park. However, when I spoke to the planning staff today, they actually do not have a specific setback for the sport courts, um, but they do review them during the special use permit process or the site plan approval process, because they typically require a special use permit for this type of use. So basically what they would do is take a look at the surrounding area, surrounding adjacent properties. You know, if it's residential, make sure that, uh, the sport courts are a reasonable distance away from the residential, those types of things. So after looking at this research from the other communities and then just best practices of kind of not really having the best way to do a one-size-fits-all code for these different types of uses, uh, we came to some recommendations for you. And our recommendations are in red and green and, uh, black in your staff report. You'll see all of the deletions in red, additional text in green and then the remaining text that is to be kept, um, in black. Uh, so when you look at your staff report, you can see that much more clearly. But here on the screen, we've summarized in bullet points what those proposed amendments are. Um, the overall goal here is to provide clarity and some more flexibility and not duplicate other sections of the code. So the first bullet point here is remove the section for swimming clubs and consider this part of all the other commercial recreational facilities. And clarify this further by changing the section title to commercial recreational facilities. If you'll look, the current title of the section is recreational facilities, tennis, golf, et cetera. So by just making it commercial recreational facilities, it encompasses any commercial recreational facilities because we can't predict what sport will come along next. Um, the next bullet says, remove the setback table and replace with a 50-foot minimum standard setback and allow the planning commission latitude to evaluate setbacks on a case-by-case basis. This would likely be during the special use and site plan approval stage where they're coming to you to ask for the permission to construct the site and get a special use permit for the land use. Uh, what we think is that there should be consideration for lessening the setback requirement, which again was 50 feet minimum, uh, based on whether they're providing adequate visual, visual screening, uh, noise reduction, light shielding, and any other mitigation techniques that are applicable to that particular property. Uh, again, like I said, it's hard for a one-size-fits-all code for many different kinds of sports and courts and outdoor activities. So this would essentially allow a minimum of 50 as a protection to the surrounding properties, uh, but allow the planning commission to essentially go down to whatever number we felt was comfortable. Um, for a setback requirement in the context that they're providing certain mitigation techniques for any adverse effects to adjacent properties. Uh, the next bullet point says, remove specific lighting requirements. Uh, right now the lighting requirements basically say the same thing that we have in a different section, which is 17.58.060. And so we would just want to remove that and reference the other section because later on, if we edit the section or the other section, we'd have to just keep editing both of them. Um, so it helps to just cross-reference. Uh, we also recommend removing the word dustless under the parking surface requirement and just replace it with asphalt or concrete. So it's very clear that that's the expectation. So it's very clear that that's the expectation while we're in there in that section. And lastly, we're proposing to remove the enclosed building section because we believe that it's assumed that casinos and recreational halls will be indoor-type businesses. So with that being said, staff recommends conducting a public hearing and discussing the proposed amendments. And I'm curious to hear what your thoughts are on the recommended amendments for the setback, whether that 50 feet seems adequate, whether there are certain other types of requirements you would like to include. Very curious to hear your thoughts. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions or discussion if needed.
Thank you, Stephanie. Does the commission have any questions for Stephanie?
Commissioner Mosby, this is Kathy Peterson.
Commissioner Peterson, proceed.
I have a couple of different questions and because I'm not exactly certain how we should go about this. On A, I understand taking away the table and doing all that. I understand the 50 feet. I'm wondering if there is any guidance as perhaps not changing this language, but that you could educate the planning commissioners, me particularly. Like, when you have lighting, how, I know that LED has changed the game, and that's why we changed the other chapter reference, but that's why it's 75 feet because they're using XYZ lighting and it has a glare ratio or whatever that is that they grade that on. I'm sure Steve Wise would be able to tell us all that, but someday Steve Wise may not be on the commission. So why we choose anything above or below 50 feet would be helpful on that criteria basis. My second follow-up, I understand removing dustless, but for the same reason that we don't know what game is going to be next, who thought we would be talking about pickleball? But asphalt or concrete? I know we've talked about permeable surfaces before and those that are able to filtrate water so that we have better management, less runoff from, say, a concrete parking lot that does nothing but push water someplace else. Are there any other options that we should be thinking about adding to that list? Asphalt and/or concrete seems very finite. Those are my questions.
Okay. Chairman, may I answer?
Please, Stephanie.
Okay. So Commissioner Peterson, to answer your first question, the lighting requirements are within that other chapter, the 17.58. And they're pretty standard. It says at the property line, the maximum light spillage is 0.5-foot candles at that property line. I don't know if there's a specific pole height requirement, but we do specify that there, basically, you cannot see the bulb within the light poles from right-of-way from adjacent properties. It has to be shielded. And so by just referencing that chapter instead, we're not duplicating what that says or being in conflict with the performance standards of that lighting. Does that answer your question?
Actually, I think you answered it fine, and I think I asked it poorly. I have, my question is, is lighting isn't the only issue? Every guy want to put it at 50 feet regardless of what amenities they have? What kind of guidance are you going to give us, whether it be lighting, whether it be noise, whether it be, what do you consider adequate visual screening? Your opinion versus my opinion may be completely different. So I just wondered if there was going to be any guidance to us why 50 feet was acceptable or why you pushed them to 75 feet? Because if I'm a business owner, I'm going to want as much of that property as I can use.
Sure. Yeah, during the special use permit and/or site plan review stage, we would be taking a look at all those types of potential negative impacts to the adjacent property. We'd be looking at noise. We'd be looking at visual impacts, all the same things that you typically see us review with any site plan. We would pay special attention, especially in areas where it's adjacent to residential. You know, how is this going to affect the properties nearby? Are they going to abide by also the noise limitation hours, that 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.? I know sometimes if you have, say, like a bar that also wants to have these activities, you know, maybe they have to stop their outdoor activities at the 10:00 p.m. mark. Or maybe if it's in an industrial area and there's not residential nearby, maybe that's something we need to look at as well, if it's not going to have any adverse effects. So we will absolutely be providing guidance on a case-by-case basis in order to help the planning commission make the best decisions.
Commissioner, any other questions?
What about the asphalt, concrete?
Oh, yes, sorry. The asphalt and concrete. You know, I believe there is a permeable asphalt product I've seen used. I don't think that it necessarily would preclude someone from doing that by saying dustless or asphalt or concrete, but I certainly understand that we don't want to limit something if there's a new technology. So if you'd rather change that to an approved hard surface or if we'd rather leave it as dustless, it's up to you guys what you think is the most appropriate recommendation there. But we will constantly be looking for better surfaces that are more environmentally friendly and more drainage-friendly if the scenarios are correct for those types of conditions. But we don't often have those proposed. So we'd love to be innovative like that and require those things, but we're not quite there with all that surface technology yet.
Commissioner Wise?
Proceed, Commissioner Wise.
Yeah, just to follow up on that. So first of all, there is actually both pervious and impervious, concrete and asphalt. I think the thing is, as long as they say that, then staff can work with developer, the, you know, the builder, to determine what might be the most appropriate material. You know, and I agree, if we could push that, it's just the technology really isn't there. But as you said, who knows where we'll be down the road. The challenge with, to me, dustless, and I don't think they'd do this, but like, could you end up with a chip and seal? You know, something that really is not appropriate, and I would hope they wouldn't do that. But I would say if we say asphalt or concrete, it doesn't mean it can't be pervious or impervious. We just, again, the staff has the flexibility to pick the material that's right for the conditions and the budget.
I have a question for Stephanie. When we're talking about the lighting, is it, and I'm not familiar with 17.58-06-060. I'm not familiar with that. So I'd really like to know exactly what that says because here, it's been about a year ago, a head, and a person I know had an issue with lighting that was coming from the back of a commercial building at the edge of their property. Not to exceed from their property line, not the person that feels offended. And yet, as I said, I'd really like to know exactly what 17.58-060 has to say. I'm not familiar with it. So not having that seems to me might be something we might consider is adding that to the list of, to the things to go through before we okay this, before we ask for a public hearing?
Sure. Chairman, would you like me to read that section for you right now?
Sure, sure. If that'd help, fine.
Yes, I'll just read. It's a short paragraph about lighting. It won't take too long here. It's Chapter 17.58.060, and I'm looking at H. It says, "Any lighting used to illuminate an off-street parking area sign or other structure," which in this case, structure would include the courts or any building on the property, "shall be arranged as to deflect light away from and adjoining residentially-zoned property from public streets. Direct of sky-reflected glare from floodlights or from high-temperature processes such as combustion or welding shall not be directed onto any adjoining property. The source of light shall be hooded or controlled. Bear incandescent light bulbs shall not be permitted in view of adjacent property or public right-of-way. Any light or combination of lights that cast light onto a public street shall not exceed 1-foot candle meter reading as measured from the center line of the street. Any light or combination of lights that cast light on adjacent residentially-zoned property being as measured from such property line." So what you'll see at the end there, just to clarify, Chairman, those measurements, if the light is being cast onto a public street, we do not allow more than 1 foot candle. And if it's being cast onto residentially-zoned properties, we measure the 0.5-foot candles from the property line. So again, it's from the subject parcel's property line, that 0.5-foot candle. So there really shouldn't be any light intrusion beyond the property lines unless it's toward a public street. And if it's toward a public street, it's probably actually providing a service because in a way, it's helped lighting the street and make it more safe for the patrons or the passersby. But again, we would probably, at the time of reviewing a special use permit for this type of use, we'd want to make sure that we look at the lighting plan, the photometric plan, very closely and that we determine for safety purposes what kind of lighting is needed in their parking lot and make sure that there's no light exposure that's detrimental to the adjacent properties.
Thank you, Stephanie. And one of the things that happens with it is when we go to a generic 50 feet and somebody comes in front of us and it really doesn't work, if that's what we're giving them, then it's hard to tell somebody, well, I think it should be 60 feet setback. So when we're opening this up to say, this is what we want, then to say we don't want it for a particular reason, I have no idea what it is, because we think it should be further back than that, we don't really have much of a leg to stand on. So I'm not sure I like that just the generic of everything is 50 feet. And then if we don't like it, it's hard for us, for me, to say, we don't think that's appropriate because the setbacks are too small. When we've, when we're basically listing it as 50 feet, how do we get away with? I mean, it seems like we're shooting ourselves in the foot with that. Does anybody else have any comments?
Commissioner Mosby? Real quick, so the way it's worded is, it is a minimum 50-foot setback. And I would agree if we just said, you know, 50 feet, that that's not, we don't want to do that. We, the 50 feet seems reasonable because actually, in a lot of cases, residential is, you know, tends to be 30 feet or under. So you've already gone beyond most residential setbacks. And as long as we say minimum, if staff recommends 75 feet, then, you know, to me, that's what we would have to follow. I don't know that we can make the decision, but to me, as long as we say there's a minimum, then we're not fighting somebody who's trying to come in at 20 or 25 feet that definitely would be too close. That's just my thought.
Commissioner Nannick?
That is exactly what I was going to say. I concur.
Commissioner Wise? Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I do.
Commissioner Willoughby?
The fifth, if you read that paragraph, the minimum 50 feet does not indicate that you can't go below 50 feet. It just says you have to look at these various mitigation efforts and will they do, you know, a job to, so that you might have it at 40 feet, 30 feet? You know, if you've got a big berm, you know, that is next to the street and you can't even see the place, what, you know, what's the difference? I mean, why would you? I think it says minimum 50, but it still says, we have the, you know, we have the wherewithal to look at these various things and decide what we want to do on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Chairman Mosby, this is Doug.
Commissioner, yeah, Doug, go ahead.
I think Alan hit a very important point. I think that the effort here from staff is to come up with something that's flexible because there may be instances, because of the size and location of some of our commercial zoning districts, where something like maybe a pickleball court might want to go would be very appropriate within 25 foot of a property line because the lighting that's used is similar to a parking lot or the sound that is, that is coming off of the courts is so minimal that it can be controlled by a sound screen or something like that at the property line. And so I think Alan kind of hit the direction that we were trying to go in establishing some sort of minimum, but being able to back further from that minimum by using mitigating, screening, light control, sound control, those kind of things. So I wanted to kind of say, I think Alan's read of the code is kind of the direction staff was intending to go. And obviously, Stephanie's on too, and she could, she can say probably more eloquently what I just tried to say.
Any other questions or comments?
Chairman?
Yes, Stephanie.
If I may, I just, I will add to what Doug said and what Commissioner Willoughby said. It's correct that we wanted to write something that had a minimum with the ability to have that flexibility. As you know, all of these different types of recreational uses sort of come and go in waves. There's always new things. There's things that kind of phase out, like swimming clubs. There's new things, you know, like pickleball, racquetball, all kinds of, you know, fun sports. And we don't necessarily want to have to come up with a setback for each individual type of sport because you also never know, is it going to be one court or 20 courts? You know, what's the actual impact overall going to be? So the purpose of this is to make sure that we do set a minimum standard and expectation just as a protection in case there is, you know, we do want to hold it to that minimum and they don't really have any other mitigation that they're providing for the aesthetics or the noise or the lighting. So at the very minimum, that 50 feet sort of builds in that protection from other properties. I think the planning commission honestly with a special use permit can require greater distance or can require mitigation techniques if they're not meeting those types of concerns by what their plans are. So even though it says 50, I'm pretty sure if we were concerned about it and your setback requirement, then 50 feet. Or if there's, you know, just other, say this goes in the Valley of Champions, and we've got, you know, the ball fields across Johnston Drive and the sand volleyball on the other side and the ice rink and other similar types of uses, maybe you need a 5-foot setback.
Did we lose Stephanie just now?
It looks like she may have dropped off.
Uh huh, okay. Very fine. Thank you, Caitlin. Any further discussion? Should we propose, Doug, or Caitlin, if she's not on there, do you have an idea of when you would like to have the public hearing?
It looks like she's back. Stephanie?
Stephanie?
Stephanie, I think your audio may be cutting in and out. I would proceed, Commissioner Mosby. There you go.
Yes, Stephanie, do you have an idea of 30 days for a public hearing on the matter? Yes, Stephanie, do you have an idea of 30 days for a public hearing on the matter?
This is the public hearing.
I think her audio is messing up. Dennis, I think it was the whole of public hearing tonight. It was advertised for this evening's meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine. If you guys want more information, or if you're not comfortable holding that public hearing tonight, and you would prefer to continue it for two weeks, it's been noticed and published. You can certainly make a motion to table it for two weeks, and we can bring you back more information. Otherwise, you could start the public hearing tonight, see if there's any public commentary or anybody from the public that wants to speak. And if not, we could either table it to the next meeting, the public hearing, or we could conclude the public hearing, and yet still not take action on this, and not take action on this ordinance amendment until you were more comfortable as a group that you've heard everything and know everything that you want to know. So you have some options. But I think the intent was, you authorized us to advertise a couple of meetings back, and we did that. So it has been published that the public hearing would be conducted tonight.
That's correct. Can you guys hear me?
Thank you, Doug. Stephanie, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I don't know why I cut out there, but I don't know how much of what I said you could hear, but is there any other questions I can answer?
The only other question is, I guess we are in a public hearing, so I guess we need to stop and have a public hearing, formally announce we're having a public hearing and see if anybody wishes to comment. So we're now opening a public hearing on the matter. Does anybody care to weigh in on this subject? I'm assuming nobody's in the council chambers?
I'm sorry, Dennis, I was muted. No, there's nobody that wishes to speak on this item.
Very fine. Thank you. Then, seeing as no one has replied, then we will close the public hearing and will be a commission discussion. Which at this point in time, I would say would include recommending the adoption of the text amendments to Shawny Missionable Code 17-80-010, unless there's further discussion. Kathy, do you have a question?
I'll make them.
Actually, no, I was going to.
I'll make them.
To adopt, but so is Willoughby.
Commissioner Willoughby?
I make a motion that we approve the proposed amendments to Section 17-80-010 are appropriate and to the zoning ordinance per staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. There's a motion to approve the staff recommendations for the text amendments to 17.80-010, and forward them on to the city council. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. That puts us into other business. Does staff have anything for the commission?
I have just one thing. This is Doug again. Just a little more than tentatively, but we wanted to kind of see what your guys' thoughts were tonight. We've been kicking around and talking about having a joint planning commission city council meeting for some time. We usually try to do these once a year, if not every other year. I know some members that have been on for a while have been to those. We're looking at doing that Monday, September 14th, I believe, at 5:00 p.m. And the single topic of conversation will be the comprehensive plan. The city has hired Ochsner Hair &amp; Hair, a design firm that is a part of Olson, to conduct our comprehensive plan revitalization. And so Ken Boone and another staff member from Ochsner Hair &amp; Hair will be there to kind of talk to both bodies about the process, desired outcomes, expectations, and those sort of things. So we hope that you can make it. If it's an absolute, not a single person on this board can be at that meeting, we want to know that, too. We tried to give you enough heads up and time ahead that we could hopefully have you set your schedule to be there, because it's a very, very important project. But at the same time, we know people have things going on. But if the majority of you could be at that meeting, it really is, in terms of logistics, probably the best date and time that we could come up with for everybody. I think Caitlin's on, too. So if I said something incorrect, please, please correct me now, Caitlin.
You're good, Doug. Everything was correct.
Okay.
Doug, would it be a Zoom, a Zoom call?
Yes, it would be a Zoom meeting. I confirmed that with Nolan today. It would be a virtual meeting, which is great, because I think a lot of the engagement part of this comp plan process with COVID, dealing with coronavirus, is going to be using innovative engagement techniques. So this will be our first experiment in holding a larger-scale virtual meeting for parties. So, but yes, Zoom, unless something changes, and I don't see anything changing, it will be a Zoom format meeting.
Doug, I assume you'll be sending out an invite, then?
Caitlin would, or Stephen, someone from city manager's office would be sending you a panelist invite, I assume, just like you get for these meetings, with a specific date and time. But again, right now, marked down, 5 o'clock, Monday, the 14th, it would be prior to that city council meeting that's scheduled for that same night.
And that's all the staff has for the commission, Doug?
That's all I have, yes.
Does the commission have anything for staff? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioner Smith, would you help us out?
Yes, sir. Mr. Busby, I would be happy to. I can't tell you what, I miss you all, though, seeing you all in person. This is kind of getting old, but so be it. Mr. Busby, just for you, I would move that we adjourn.
Second. Ah, thank you, Commissioner Wise. A motion of second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. We're done. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.